This time I'd like to call the regular meeting of July 15, 2024 to order. May we all stand for a prayer from Councilman Mike Ludwig.
I want to quickly ask for a moment of silence for the events that happened on Saturday, the assassination attempt of President Trump. I pray for the wounded. We pray solace for the family of who lost a loved one on that day. Again, I would ask for a quick moment of silence and then I want to hopefully leave an uplifting summer prayer. Thank you. Heavenly Father, we thank you for summer. We thank you for light and warmth. We thank you for the sun. We thank you for the gifts of nature and for the annual cycles of our seasons. We humbly pray for blessings for our town during these wonderful summer months. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Counselor Ludwig.
Here.
Counselor Mangini.
Here.
Counselor Nasuda.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Here.
Counselor Santinella.
Here.
Counselor Angier is absent. Counselor Secala.
Here.
Counselor Crissati.
Here.
And Counselor Hendrickson.
Here.
Nine members are present, one is absent.
Thank you, Sheila. In the event of a fire and emergency, there's two means of exits out of the council chambers. Exit out the rear doors, walk a safe distance away from the building, or exit through the side doors, go down one flight of stairs, and out the rear doors and also a safe distance from the building. I will entertain a motion for to approve the minutes of the special meeting of June 13, 2024.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded. Are there any comments, corrections, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? It is unanimous. And B, the special meeting of June 17, 2024.
So moved.
Motion's made.
Second.
And seconded. Any comments, corrections, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? The regular meeting of June 17, 2024.
So moved.
Motion's made is second. Comments, corrections, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. And the special meeting of June 26, 2024.
So moved.
Well, any comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention is Councilman Santinella. Okay, we have no special -- do we have a special guest tonight, Chris? No special guest tonight. So we're going to open it up to public communication, and the rules are, any person who wishes to address the council shall first be recognized by the chair, and she'll state their name and address for the record. They shall limit their remarks to five minutes. After each person who desires has had the chance to speak, those desiring to speak a second time will be permitted to do so, and shall limit their remarks to three minutes. During public communications, item number seven on the agenda, public members shall limit their remarks to two rounds, total of eight minutes. During public communications, item 16 on the agenda, if prior to 11:00 p.m., each person shall limit their remarks to three minutes. Public communication shall be limited to one hour unless extended by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. All remarks addressed to the administration of the town shall be addressed to the town manager and not to the individual employee. Public members shall observe proper decorum and good conduct, and shall refrain from personalities and improper language. Would anyone like to come up and speak to the council this evening? Maureen.
Wondering, is the police department fully staffed? Because I saw an ad on Facebook for the armed guard positions, that they obviously haven't filled them all yet if they're advertising still. So if they're not filled, they're going to have to backfill for the schools. And so I'm wondering if they're fully staffed, because that's a lot of extra hours to put in. And regarding the armed guards in the schools, my understanding from asking on that post is full-time positions will have the option of benefits. So it's not a strictly unbenefited position. Base rate of $35 an hour, when you add in taxes, FICA, Medicare, it goes up higher than that. I'm presuming 10 schools, because we have the 10 schools. That's if we don't cover the special program over at the annex. Seven hours a day times 10 schools is 70 hours, 181 days, 12,670 hours. Without unemployment tax payments, we're looking at $477,374 just for those. Are we covering summer programming? Are we covering basketball games, football games? We don't know what's going on, and this is not the type of information that is so operational that it can't be shared with the public. I lived here before, I had kids in the school before, when we had them before. We had a whole heck of a lot more information. Now, life has taught me a lot about special needs children, special education. I have a lot of concern, and I know I am not the only parent who does. And there needs to be an open meeting between you guys, the Board of Ed, the police department, answering a lot of questions. What are these people going to be doing? I don't need to know the security protocols. I need to know if a child's becoming dysregulated. Are they getting into that situation? What's their training? Are they the same person who's here every day? Because you know what? When we had the BTs, which most of them that aren't in very specific programs are gone now, those people knew those kids, and the counselors knew those kids. One child is escalated when you come at them face-to-face. Another child that helps to de-escalate them. If this program of the armed guards is not fully staffed with a regular person every day, we're looking at really a lot of problems for these kids. And parents of the kids that have trouble regulating, for whatever reason, it's primarily not because they're not well-parented, it's they have emotional issues, they have developmental issues, they have mental health issues. There are going to be more and more kids in the classroom because the classroom numbers are going up, and they're going to be pinging off of each other, and we're going to have more and more problems. So we need to know what interactions our children can expect from these people. And if they're not going to be interacting with them, we need to prepare our children either way. Because when you have a child who has a difficult time regulating, never mind the child who just is like, whoa, what's going on there, and is having a bad day, you need to prepare that child. And it's not right that we know nothing. We know nothing, except there might be somebody there at the door with a gun. Okay, great. That's not sufficient. And that's not the type of information that is not okay to share. It doesn't minimize the security to our schools by sharing that kind of information with parents. And frankly, the teachers need to know it too, because they're going to be dealing with it head-on without the supports that they had before. If they are going to deal with our children, how are those interactions going to be documented? In their files and in our children's files? And how is that going to be communicated to the children? Do you have an MOU? Do you have that yet? If not, why? These are things that need to be known, need to be solved. And if you don't have the people to do the jobs yet, because if they're not applying now, then they're not ready to be onboarded in time for school, because it's a, what was it you guys said? $1,000 per applicant to even clear them? And then all sorts of training?
Maureen, I'm sorry your five minutes is up.
Oh, I'll be back.
Anyone else?
Members of the Town Council, I am speaking to encourage your support for an upcoming event that I believe is crucial to our community's engagement in civic affairs. On August 21, from 1 to 5, the Enfield Community Advocates are organizing a Rock the Vote event at the Enfield Town Green. The purpose of this event is to empower our residents, especially young adults and first-time voters, by providing them with the information and resources they need to participate actively in our democratic process. In today's world where every vote counts and informed decisions shape our future, it's important, more than ever, to ensure that our community members are educated about their rights and responsibilities as voters. The Rock the Vote event is not a political event, but an opportunity for the community to unite around the importance of engagement. The event will feature voter registration booths and opportunities for community members to engage with elected officials and candidates through those that are willing to share their campaign materials. It promises to be an informative and engaging afternoon that will strengthen our community's commitment to the democratic process. As members of the Town Council, your support and your promotion of this event is crucial. By encouraging attendance and spreading the word through your networks, we can ensure that the Rock the Vote event reaches a wide audience and has a meaningful impact on voter engagement in Enfield. I kindly request that you consider endorsing this event in order to support its success. Additionally, your presence at the event would be greatly appreciated and would demonstrate our community's commitment to fostering a culture of civic responsibility and engagement. I thank you for considering this request. Together, we can make a significant difference in encouraging voter participation and ensuring that every voice in Enfield is heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for the first time? Tom.
Tom Walsh, Roseanne Street. I still don't understand why you guys don't use, put substations into schools and not need the guards. But I came here tonight about these apartments that we're going to give this big tax break to, and I just figured I'd give my opinion. I think these projects will only make our problems with rising property taxes and future budgets worse with the additional strain they will put on Enfield school system, police, fire, sewer system, et cetera. This may also have an adverse effect on homeowner's property taxes. And everybody says that we need more affordable housing and that apartments will generate revenue with property tax paid by the owners. From what I've found, apartments per unit do not provide revenue compared to single-family homes. I add up the assessments of some single-family homes in Southwood Acres, a street in Southwood Acres, and after a little math and using an Enfield online tax calculator, I came up with the average tax bill that would be about $6,035 each. It's the average of the whole street. I'm sure some houses in the town pay a lot more tax and some less. Here are some rental properties I found on a town database. I took the number of units listed under occupancy, divided into the assessment value of the property, and then put the number in the Town Tax Calculator online. And this is what I came up with per unit. I didn't identify any of the large ones here, because this way I wouldn't be pointing at anything. Okay, the complexes. $1,863 per unit. $1,295 per unit. $1,589 per unit. $1,503 per unit. Then I found some multifamilies. Six units, $1,268 per unit. Two units, $2,518 each. Three units, $2,201 each. I rounded these up. Six units, $1,252 each. Four units, $1,776 each. Another four units, $1,671 each. Quite a big difference from the street of single families I averaged. About two-thirds of these properties I averaged are owned by people or companies listing addresses outside of Enfield and some outside of Connecticut. Please correct me if the following information I found about the mall project in a couple of news articles is incorrect. I want to see if I understand this tax break correctly. They are going to build a complex worth $250 million, and the town agreed to free the property assessment at $7.3 million for the next 10 years. Is the $7.3 million the current assessment? And will $7.3 million also be the total assessment on the completed $250 million project? I ask this because 70% assessment of $250 million is 175 million, which would be a $6,442,000 tax bill at today's mill rate. If 7.3 is the total, that would mean, per the Town Tax Calculator, Enfield would instead receive $265,090 per year for the next 10 years. And I also did a calculation. If it was just 450 apartments, that would average out to, I know there's going to be stores and whatever else. It would come out to, they would be contributing $586 per year each. Then I also read that the property is going to raise to $12,849,208 and freeze for another 10 years. Also, is that correct? If the town will basically get the same amount of tax revenue as it is now, I don't see the value in this. The only people that are getting a deal here is an out-of-state company. I find it kind of ridiculous that the town of Enfield can't create a tax freeze for homes of elderly residents when they reach 70 years old or so. Residents who have been paying property tax on their homes to the town of Enfield for probably the last 30 or 40 years, but you can give a huge tax break to some out-of-state company to build something I don't see will benefit Enfield or its residents. This definitely doesn't seem right. I think if possible, it would be a good idea for our town to slow down, take a step back, and wait on moving forward with the mall property, and take a closer look at this if you still can, including any other apartment projects until the town and property owners can find a business-oriented type projects. Was that me? I'll come back.
Anyone else for the first time? Seeing none, second time?
Maureen Griffin, Abbey Road. If we do use police to cover, it's going to be overtime. We're looking at base rate of pay, at least $59 an hour for the police. Now, on to a different subject. I presume the DPW is not fully staffed, because I can't imagine that they would willfully neglect our buildings. Eight-year-old high school, air conditioning is out, has been out for several days. My daughter's drama program got canceled for a day. I know summer school got canceled for a couple of days. Now they're over at JFK. Thank God JFK was redone too, and that hopefully is being maintained. If it's not fully staffed, then we're really being penny-wise pound foolish, because if it hasn't been maintained, then is it still under warranty? You have to maintain things to have them be under warranty. Do we just screw it, get the tax payer by not having a large enough DPW crew to maintain our buildings? Are we going to have to pay to fix this rather than having it be fixed according to warranty? I hope not. Question. How much, how many hours, how many dollars of in-kind services were spent for the Fourth of July celebration? It's fun, it's great. Every department in this town has been slashed to the bone and then more. How much did we give them? Priorities. Our children, schools, our roads, services to the residents. The festival's nice. It's not more important than those things. Thanks.
Thank you.
Tom Walsh, Roseanne Street. Okay, I'll do this again. If possible, I think it would be a good idea for our town to slow down, take a step back, and wait on moving forward with the mall property. Take a closer look at this if you still can, including any other apartment projects until the town and property owners can find a business-oriented type projects suitable for these properties. That will generate more in tax revenue with less stresses on the town's infrastructure, and that will not end up costing taxpayers more in the long run. Enfield needs to seek more tax-paying businesses with good-paying jobs to help Enfield grow and prosper. I also think that going forward, the charter needs to be revised. I think it needs to be revised on a lot of things. But for this, so that any tax breaks requested by businesses in the future would be decided by referendum vote by the residents, not by the Town Council. And the cost of the referendum should be funded by the business requesting the tax break and not the town. So what I really can't understand about the mall project is why they want to build this here. Who's going to want to stay in these luxury hotels or rent an expensive apartment? There's nothing here to attract people. The only views are going to be highway traffic, the surrounding fast-food joints, a couple pot stores, shopping plazas in almost every direction, two older motels. Enfield has no local attraction and really nothing even close to draw people here. Hopefully, this doesn't change direction like the Strand Theater project once they have their foot in the door. Another thing too, you know, I noticed when I was looking at some of these larger apartment buildings, I'm sure a lot of out-of-state cars visiting these people during the day. That's all I got to say. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Seeing none. Kelly, did you? No? Okay. Seeing none. We will move on to Councilman Communications. I always start down there, so I'll start down here. Jim? Anything?
Just real quick, of course, I want to, just want to put out a reminder about the farmer's market. Sorry, guys. See a lot more vendors. It's growing and growing every week, and the foot traffic would be, if you see the foot traffic grow, that would be great too. So I just want to put a shout-out to all those who bring in the vendors and do a good job making it grow, because I see a lot more vendors every week. If we could, to the town manager, through the mayor, if we could post something on the Facebook page to remind her about the farmer's market, that would be great. Thank you.
All set. Thank you, Jim. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to mention, I had a couple veterans ask about the House bill that passed, 5491, for the property tax exemption for veterans who have a permanent or total disability. It is being, it did pass, and it does start October 1 of this year. Any veteran who believes they may be eligible has to apply at the town like any other program. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
That's a good thing. Thank you, Bob. Mike?
I'll be very quick, through the mayor, to the assistant town manager, town attorney. Confirm August 6 is the, I think, our turn at the deposition, if I'm using my terminology correctly.
Yes, on August 6 at 2:00, the Solar Signing Council resumes its hearing on the Town Farm Road application that the town of Enfield is an intervenor and a party. And I believe that will be when we present some of our, at least our testimony.
Again, through the mayor, to Steve, could you reserve the room downstairs, so if anyone wants to come? Should be very interesting. August 6, 2:00. Thank you very much.
Cindy?
Thank you. Just a couple of items. First, and very important, we have a lot of emergency vehicles, especially in the summer, that, you know, are traveling on our roads, with vehicles that disregard the fact that they are emergency vehicles and do not move over. So I'm begging people to please be aware of the emergency vehicles. Police, EMS, fire, get out of the way. Pull over. It's important that they get by to wherever they need to go. I've noticed more and more of it this week. It's very scary. There could be a tragedy, and we want to give our emergency people every opportunity to deal with what they need to deal with. I also want to remind people that we have a primary on August 13. Please get out and vote for Democrat and/or the Republican side. I do want to wish our colleague Doug Finger well with his family and himself. He will be missed. Doug and I go way back, and we coached soccer together, matter of fact. And even though we may not have agreed on every issue, he was a good councilperson, and I thank Doug for that. I'd like to, through our mayor, through our town manager, get a status update on Enfield High School with regards to the situation, because kids are being shifted all over town, which, it's great, you know, we've got accommodations for the summer school kids. But there's a problem, and we need to find out how to fix it. And finally, I do want to address the Fourth of July celebration. First, I want to give a great big thank you to every member of that committee. I was there every day, working with Lori, side by side, and with others from our town, our community. That group of people is very dedicated, they do not receive compensation, and much of the money that goes into the Fourth of July celebration is from sponsors, individual sponsors, corporate sponsors. I know the town does some in-kind services, you know, maybe there's a small budgetary amount attributed, but all in all, the Fourth of July celebration benefits 95% of our community. There were thousands of people that went through, and I'm very proud that we are able to offer that, you know, happy lifestyle for people, give some people some pleasure. So I just wanted to say thank you to the Fourth of July committee as well.
Thank you, Cindy. Bob?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be very quick tonight. First of all, everybody that, you know, spoke tonight, Maureen, you know, all of your concerns are, you know, duly noted. Tom, charter revision does need to be revised. We are going to be in that process coming up shortly. So I do agree with you, some things in the charter definitely needs to be revised, and I do like your idea of possibility of thinking about seniors who have lived in their home for X amount of years for a particular type of a tax freeze. Okay, so I do hear you on that also. Rock the Vote. Thanks for coming up and sharing that information. August is right around the corner, you know, July's halfway through here, so. And then just one, actually, two other things. It's really nice to see the work being done over at Powder Hollow. Took a ride through and seeing the work over there, and it's really progressing. So my only question that I do have, a timeline, I don't know if there is a particular timeframe or a timeline, you know, for a completion project, or if it's going to be in the fall or whatever, you know, just an update on that. And then I have received a couple of phone calls about senior volunteer tax credit. You know, are people going to be getting their, who qualified and getting their credit for July, or are we going to wait until January? So that's just one other question I just had to answer, or asked to ask, but I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Gina?
No, I think the town manager is going to address Enfield High School, and that was my only thing.
my only thing.
Thank you. John?
Thank you. First of all, just a clarification, the... there is a primary, it is August 13th. The Democratic primary... the Democratic primaries are for the 58th District and the 7th Senatorial. And there is also a state senate Republican primary that is taking place as well. Early voting takes place from the 5th to the 11th of August. There is one polling location, it is here at Town Hall. And I'm going to ask the town manager, do you know the hours on the 5th to the 11th of early voting? I believe it's 8 to...
I don't know. We can get the information from the registrars.
If we could just... I just think if we could just let people know what hours Town Hall is going to be open for that, it would be, I think it'd be important information. So thank you. Mr. Walsh, I agree with some of the things that you said and not others, but one thing I absolutely hear from people all the time is the issue of out-of-state license plates that are registered to people that live in town who are not paying taxes in the town of Enfield. And I have been trying very hard to work on that issue. I hear it from constituents all the time. And I think more constituents who are concerned about that should come forward and express that concern, because there are things that we can do about it. But I need more voices here to express their discontent with that, because it is a serious problem, in my opinion. Thank you for bringing it up. I also want to extend my well wishes to Councilor Finger. I know that this decision to leave was a difficult one for him. We have always enjoyed a good relationship with spirited debate, and Doug is always... we've always managed to get ourselves to a good place in the end, and I just want to publicly wish him well and thank him for his service to the council. That's it.
That's it. Deputy Mayor Pisner?
Thank you to everyone who came out. Maureen, thank you for the invite to Rock the Vote. I look forward to that. Also, Mike Grip, he won the Patriots Award this year, so congratulations to Mike. He's a great veteran in our town who does so much, so it was well-deserved. National Police Night Out is August 6th. I believe it starts at 6:00 PM here at the Town Hall. Great night for families to come out. They can see all the emergency vehicles, all the trucks, the ambulances and such. There's businesses set up, all the activities for the kids. It's really a nice night, so I hope to see a lot of families there. Also, there is a group of young actors and actresses out of Granby called the Valley Students. And it actually has a lot of Enfield students that are in this. I've gone to a few of their plays, and this year they're actually putting on Les Mis, which is a really difficult play for high school students. So I'm encouraging people, they do have a website, and the tickets, I believe it's last Friday and Saturday in July. So if somebody's looking for some good high school performers, and there are many from Enfield that are already in this, it is actually a nice night out. The only thing I have, Mayor, to the town manager, was I was going to ask about the air conditioner, which you're going to talk about, but also to the roofs for the Enfield Police Station in the library, if Donald gave you any kind of update on that as far as...
Yeah, I mean, we discussed it in leadership about how we should proceed. He gave a couple of options, that one bid came in under, one came in significantly over, so he's looking and waiting for guidance from the council in regard to how you want to proceed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you, Maureen. First, I want to thank USA Recycling and Trash, or whatever new name they're using now, because they're using a new name. They put on a pretty big recycling conference here at their new facility in Enfield, and they went all out. And let me tell you, what happens with the recycling and the amount of work that it takes to recycle the trash, it's no wonder it costs more money to recycle now than it does just to throw something away. And the investment in the new facility that they built in the state of Connecticut is unbelievable. But I want to thank them for that. I did drop off some information to the assistant town manager, that hopefully he could post it online, about, you know, there's a lot of myths of what can be recycled and what can't be recycled and stuff like that. But again, I want to thank them, they are truly a great community partner with the town of Enfield. Next, the North Central Connecticut Professional Business Women would like to donate a bench to the town of Enfield. It will have an inscription on it, and I believe it's from one of their members, but they want to pay for it, everything, they just don't know how to start, where to go. Do they need to buy a special type of bench? I mean, are there ADA rules to it, where it would go? So they're asking for a little guidance, they want to give us something. Now, I do know that, I believe last year, there was a bench at Parkman that fell apart, and it was not replaced, so there's a place it could go. Every time I look out back here, what a beautiful thing to do is have donated benches around the new walkway. I think that would be great, and maybe if we picked, the council picked, or even Cultural Arts picked, a particular bench that they would like to see put there, because I know we were talking about a lot of art also to display throughout town, that would be the start. So here's, somebody wants to give us something, I say, we figure out what we want, and let's start moving forward with it, because I have a feeling other people will follow suit. You know, donate benches in memory of somebody. As far as the out-of-state plates, Tom, that's John's baby, 100%. It has been a mission of his, I give him 100% credit, you're not wrong. Not only are they at the apartment complexes, they are at the schools and the Child Development Center and stuff like that. So I do, and to Councilman Santinella's credit, he's beat this to death, and I've kind of said, well, you know, but the more, now that he keeps bringing it to our attention, you have no choice but to look, and you start to realize, he's on to something. And you see it, you're on to it now. So maybe that's something that we talk about at the next public safety meeting or something like that, because we do have the plate readers and stuff. I know that our Child Development Center, the town, the taxpayers fund quite a bit of money to that, and it should be Enfield residents only. So, good point. The Councilman Finger, I've been friends with Councilman Finger for 20-plus years. I know the decision he made wasn't an easy one, but I respect it. I'm not happy to see him go, but I don't think he had a choice in this situation, and I stand by his decision that he did, and I truly, I think I respect him more for making the decision. Just trust me when I say that he did not bail out on the people who elected him, because it is family first, period. We're all volunteers up here, we all take, you know, the good with the bad, mostly bad, because you can make one person happy, 10 people aren't. So to Doug and his family, I wish you nothing but the best of luck, truly, from my heart. And if there's anything you ever need, I think every single one of us up here would be right there for you. And thank you for the time you've worked with us. And then, on the seat, we're off for August, so our next meeting will be in September, but it's an open seat. You can apply. Anybody who lives in District 3, any registered Republican can apply. They can reach out to Kelly Hemler at the Enfield Republican Town Committee, or if they don't want to go through the committee, they can send their application directly to the town manager's office, and the council will make a decision on who fills the seat. But it does have to be a District 3 resident, and it does have to be a Republican, because that's the seat we're replacing. It's not a political issue, that's just the way the process goes. So anybody, you sit out there and you chastise us, you don't like our decisions, you want to make a change, and come out from behind the keyboard on Facebook, this is your opportunity. Come, fill out the application, get interviewed, who knows, at the next meeting, you could be sitting up here with us. But that's all I had. And like I said, Chris, I don't know if you missed it, about the bench that the North Central Professional Business Women want to donate, if we could get it to Cultural Arts, have them pick a bench, because I think if we can, you know, find that bench that meets throughout town, we could put them up, you know, Powder Hollow Park, here, everywhere, a lot of places. And I want to thank them for their generosity, and once we get a bench, I would be happy to invite them in as a special guest and explain to us what their thoughts are. That's all I have. Thank you. Moving on to the town manager's report.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor, members of the council, guests and folks at home. I'll try to go in order of some of the things, because I think they're all pretty important, so I'd like to respond to them tonight. One, in regard to Rock the Vote, if you get us that info, we'll put it on our site in advance to get some publicity for you. 4th of July, I agree, I've been here for probably as long as the event, and no, not back to 1776, Ken, but for a long time. And what people should understand, I think sometimes there's a misinformation gap. It's a town event. We went out to bid many years ago and said, who will sponsor this and run it for us? So when we ask about in-kind services, we're paying for it because it is an Enfield town event. Our insurance covers it, that's why we have the presence that we do. It is a reflection on Enfield as to how that event is conducted and how people respond to it. It has been a success, it's been featured in the Boston Globe as one of the top three local 4th of July events, so I'm quite proud of it. There isn't expense, but years back, when I was town attorney, we brought the police in because they had high school students and college students doing security. That was inadequate, especially around areas where they're selling alcohol, and we have a lot of young children, bands at night in the venue, so we imposed that requirement on them. They are an incredible group, I know them all. I take no credit, Steve's been in the liaison, other assistant managers in the past. I can't believe the amount of work that those people on the committee do. You know, my former secretary Deb is on it, and every other, what are you going to play? Golf? Nope, 4th of July, it's a Sunday afternoon in October, you know, in January, in March, a wrap. The amount of time these individuals donate is astounding, we should all give them a thank you. But I want the public to know, this is a 4th of July and Town of Enfield event, so that is why we support it, and we want to make sure it's successful going forward, because when people come, they expect and they believe it's a Town of Enfield event. So I would just like to give them a shout-out on the incredible job that they do. And I'll tell you, if we were to try to switch horses, or for some reason they became disinterested, it would be impossible to resuscitate that event. Their knowledge, their institutional knowledge, in all of the different areas of it, they're flawless. They do raise a tremendous amount of money, Cindy, to help, you know, augment it. We supplement it, but it is a Town of Enfield event, and if we want to at some point discontinue it, let's just be clear, that that's a choice for the council to make, but I think they do an incredible job, and the town is well-known for that in a good way. So I didn't want to not remark about that. And I understand, times are tight, but we still, as I said with the concerts, we raise money for those. We still have to have fun, entertainment venues, we have to have playgrounds, we have to have splash pads, we have to have parks for our people to go to, even when times get rough. Probably more important than, during COVID, we were one of the few, we were very, very smart about how we addressed our parks and not closing them, not giving people an outlet. So I would just say, I support it going back, you know, 30-some-odd years, and I thank them for their service. In regard to guards, we're not going to talk too much, but Maureen, you are correct, more information can be given that doesn't jeopardize security. We did that last time, I've talked to the chief, we're going to meet with the new superintendent, and I think we fully intend to have an orientation meeting before school opens to share with everybody what the plan is, what are the protocols, what will these folks be doing? We did it last time, and as these guards that were there that were unarmed became part of the fabric of these schools, we had that experience back 10 years ago, and I hope and expect it will happen again if we all work in concert to make it so. And we've worked with the school, the MOU was done several weeks back, we worked with the board, we didn't have a lawyer, and they didn't have, we had one lawyer. We worked on it collaboratively and together for the same purpose and goal, to keep our students, teachers, and visitors safe in the schools. We will, and we've worked with them for training of these individuals, so they can deal with those situations that are so unique to the school system as compared to here at the Town Hall with adults. So I thank you for your interest, and we will be working towards that and have an orientation meeting. We will have some of the guards, we'll have the police chief, but we are moving forward, we do seem at this juncture to have a full complement. The reason, and I said it when I, last week, is, well, let's go out, we could lose somebody over the summer. Maybe we'll get a couple extras spare, so we don't run into the situation about the police overtime. But I can report to you that we look to be in good shape, we'll continue to work on it, and I endorse and adopt what you've said, we do need to have the public, the teachers, the students, and people when they come back to school, have an orientation, so they know what we're going to be doing there. So thank you for your comments. Tom, I've always liked Tom, he doesn't always agree, but one thing I'll say, both Tom and Maureen and all the speakers tonight, it's a pleasure when people come up with such politeness and civility and ask questions so sincerely that are on the minds of a lot of people at home. So I thank you for that, and it makes me inspired to answer, because you know, sometimes I get a little hot under the collar, but you disarmed me, Tom. So I'm going to just, tonight, I think it's important enough, on the square, everybody wants to get out of here, it's hot, it's the summer, but I think it's imperative to respond to some of Tom's questions. What I will say is this, it, right now, we just, we applied for the CIF, the Community Grant with the state of Connecticut, the deadline was a week or two ago, and we got in under the deadline. As part of that, you know, they have to state what their investment will be. Their investment now, they estimate, is $305 million. That's a big investment, it's one of the largest investments of any type of project like that in the state. So I hope the state is interested, and I'll tie that in in a moment. We received today from them, and it's proprietary, I can't release it to all parties yet, but a well-known, it's called the Cannon Research Southwest Group out of Buffalo, New York, they've done a retail sales analysis for these folks at the square. You were right, Tom, why would they come here? Looks kind of dismal, looks like what's in the area. They don't invest $300 million, though, unless they've done these studies, the market studies, the housing studies, and the retail study. The retail study shows that they are anticipating, again, this is their money, Tom, we're putting in, I'm going to address the tax rate, again, we don't spend or lose anything unless they come and they're successful and they do what they say. Town's not out anything, okay? But what will happen is, between the two hotels, the restaurants, the retail, and they've shared some of the national retailers, stores, restaurants, that you would know very well, that would be a great draw to this town, it would become, what you just said, Tom, a destination if these particular companies come. But they're estimating right now, the yearly sales generated from the Enfield Square when the components are in place will be between $218 and $270 million generated a year. That's why the state is interested, because of the sales tax, also the occupancy tax that will be generated by the two hotels. Now, the component about the housing, we've had a lot of studies done by the state and by us and CROG and other organizations. They've always advocated mixed juice, they wanted housing there. And I can only tell you from this project and a project on the river, the Leavits, that we're working with their developers to develop some housing there, restaurants, retail, maybe a linear park on the river, again, a destination, Tom, with the train station, which again is on track to be, start construction next year, early next year, we just got a report, we're ready to go. So these pieces are coming together. But to get back to the sales that would be generated, it's amazing, because right now, this is what happened, it's a little complex, I'll try to keep it simple, but I think it bears repeating, and we can share the charts, Tom, that John prepared for me. Basically, we did a TIF district, okay, tax investment, tax increment financing, TIFF. We did it in 2018, hoping someday we would have a resurgence in the economy. So what that did is, in 2018, we set an assessment on every property within the TIF district, which is the square and then parts of Thompsonville. So for instance, Tom, if a building were set at, in 2018, we said it's worth 100 grand, that's now in concrete forever. So what happens? From 2018 on, we hoped there would be a rise in the value of property. And under the TIF, and this is a state project, we just extended it to go from 20 years to 30, so we could do this deal with the square. So what occurs is, your property was worth 100 grand in 2018. Today, because of the economy, value, building, things are going up, it's worth, say, 200,000, all right? The first 100,000 in taxes goes to the town, every dime of it, just like it did before. That new amount going forward, from 2018, that new 100,000 under the TIF, as long as the TIF's in place, we do a 50/50 split. 50% goes to the general fund, 50% goes back into the TIF. And what the money in the TIF is being used for is like this project, we can help with... And what the money in the TIF is being used for is like this project, we can help with pursuit costs, we can match some of the expenses, we can do it for little businesses, the TIF Committee is going to be looking at that. One of the big challenges for companies to expand is, a site plan, it's going to cost me 10 grand. I need an architect, I don't have the money, but I've been here. The TIF allows, and the states, you can help them with some of that money. Put, you know, requirements in place, and that's what the money's to be used for. We have 1.5 million in that TIF, Tom, from 2018 till today, just that difference in value, that 50% increase, we have 1,505. And a third of it, we're using with the square. You know, we're going to be able to help them with pursuit costs, but upon completion, it's refunded. We get the money back, every dime. We just completed the agreement that council authorized. But this is what's very interesting, and I think exciting. You asked about values, and it can get a little in the weeds. Know this, in 2018, we set the value of the square at about 12.4. That's what we said it was worth, and it's for all time. Well, since then, as the occupancy has gone down to under 80%, it's in a deferred state of repair, now we have a tax appeal, and I'll just tell you, I can say this publicly, they are saying it's worth 3 million. All right? We have a court date in the fall, and we're going to be somewhere between their number and our number, which is, we've already said in 2018, it was worth only 12. All right? So it's, a court's going to set it somewhere. So what we did in looking at this, saying, well, John, what do you think, our lawyers, our appraisers, we said, we think if we set it at 7.2, and again, we're not bound by this, if they don't buy it, we don't have to honor that 7.2 with NAMDAR. We'll go to trial. We'll go to trial and get the lowest rate we can. But if they sell it, we've agreed for the first 10 years, the amount, the value of it will be 7.2, and the taxes, you were right, did between 260 and 300. But the benefit to us is, every year, if it stays with NAMDAR and doesn't get developed, it's just going to continue to go down till we get no taxes, and it's valueless and a blight. But even if you look at our rate, locking in at the 7.2 or 4 for the first 10, there's a nexus, given the mill written increase, we'll actually, for the last three or four years of that agreement, be making more than we're making now, currently. So that's good. The second 10 years is where the TIF agreement comes in. And this is pretty substantial, and this is why I want you to understand this, Tom, and everybody listening. These are the numbers. If, and we've assessed it low, we've said if their assessed value is 90 million, okay? If they really build it and it's worth 300, it'll be 70% of that, really would be a lot higher. But we've, John's always conservative. So we're estimating, when that second 10 years comes up, it'll be worth 91 million. This is the great part, that will generate, from that year in 2036 to 2046, $3 million a year in taxes. All right? The first 400, because I told you, the baseline goes into the TIF, we'll get that. We refund under the agreement, because that's what we did to give them incentive, we gave them a descending scale of, from, it'll be, they'll get 50% the first year, then they'll, it'll go down to 98 deduction, down to 96, until it expires. But the town will make, Tom, in total, for that 10 years, over $2 million a year. So it is a great benefit to us, and then when it expires, it'll go up perhaps to 3 to 4 million. So understand that, for the next 10 years, we're in a better place, because remember, if they were to demolish it for a year or two, we get zero taxes, it's worthless. So for the next two, three years, while they demolition and rehab and remediate, we're still going to get our taxes like we're getting today. And at the 10-year mark, it'll be built, and we'll be getting about $2 million in the coffers. When it expires, we'll be getting about 3 million. So I think it's a good deal for the town. And again, all this is theoretical, it only comes into place if they get their approvals, their state aid, and they actually build it. But I wanted just to share that with you, because it is a big amount of taxes for us. And I'll tell you, the demographics, both from that property and this one, is a lot of older people, not you, but older people like me, and the younger people, they want apartments now. They aren't as interested in the homes, there's not the market, all of their studies show it. John Santinella has asked, well, what about condos? There's not a market anymore. People want to be mobile, they want to be near a train. And the thing about this, it's very similar to the Blue Back in West Hartford, where there's housing and then businesses for them to support, and much like in South Windsor, it's the same, they've just built luxury apartments next to it. And we had the same question, Tom, why would you want to be in a hotel here? They just put a beautiful one, they're fully occupied. People, it's a different demographic from you and me. You're right, I want to look out and see water, or maybe a forest. A lot of these people don't care. The business corridor between Springfield and Hartford has heated up to such a degree that they do have a lot of people who, they know that they'll be able to fill those hotels. So maybe I haven't sold you, but I'm telling you, from our looking at this, there's very few people who are going to come in and make this investment. And the reason it's so daunting is because remediation costs and the demolition are so staggering, people don't want to bother with it. You know, they want to come to a beautiful, pristine piece of property and just build, where this, they don't know what they're going to run into at the end. So that's why we need the state money and some of the money, and they've done, this is their, they've done three, they just signed a fourth one in Wisconsin, and we're five of NAMDAR malls they've successfully converted. It's a true success story. And in Connecticut, there aren't any of those coming to malls. You look at Buckland, you look at other parts of the state, they're just cratering. So I think, in our search and having been here, I think these folks are best situated to bring this project to conclusion, and I think it will actually start that effect, Tom, when we get the river done, the train, these apartments, the perhaps, I hope, the all-sports center. We will be a destination then. And my whole goal, and I'll stop, because it excites me, is to be able to reduce taxes on the residents. Because when we bring in industrial and business, and that, I don't know, and I'll ask John, and maybe you can look at our chart, what does $3 million a year for one entity like the Square, how many homes is that in Enfield, John? If your average was 6,000 a house, if they're paying us 3 million, six times five, is that 500 houses?
500,000.
500, it's huge, if, I don't think it's 500,000, but the point is, Tom, we then, that switches to go from the backs of the households and residences to go to the businesses and the commercial. They'll take on that, because they've put such a huge investment, and hopefully on our side, the taxes, people will, we won't see an increase, we'll be able to reduce them. So that's our hope. So I just wanted to make sure I could share that with you, because it's a very rosy prospect, and they are working, they have architects, they have floodplain people, they've pulled out all the stops, they're working at a breakneck speed on this project. Every day, we get emails, and our staff is, Brown Fields, we're going to be applying in September, in case there's contamination that they discover, that we'd have access to the state and be able to be eligible for some funding. So I'm guardedly optimistic, and I hope everybody at home will be excited for it. It's not what everybody wants, right? It's not perfect, but I think we're lucky to have them come, and many other communities, I think, would be, and are envious of it. So we'll keep our fingers crossed, Tom. Thank you.
Just one comment to the Town Manager's discussion about the mall. So based on the sales tax, the sales revenue, the sales tax that would be generated for the state is roughly $19 million every single year, based on those retail numbers. So from a state investment perspective, they recover in one year's period of time, the investment that they put in, in terms of new tax, sales tax revenue.
From your lips to the ears of the governor. We've talked to the staff, they have been helpful, the people at the Economic Development, I want to commend the governor, since we've been here, he has helped us, he's been a friend of Enfield. There's, this is a commission that reviews it, but the governor has input, all of his directors, whether it's Economic Development, the DOT, DEP, they've all bent over backwards to help us. So I hope that we'll get a good amount of funding, and the project will become a reality.
Okay, well, I don't want to be a Debbie Downer, but the air conditioning at the high school?
Back down to earth, right? Donald, I've been in communication with him throughout the day, they had a problem there last week that Butch was, our in-house electrician, was able to address. This is a bigger issue. So they brought in a contract we've used for years, Woodcock, I was going to say Woodstock, but Woodcock, and they're on it, it's about a $10,000 part, and we all lament, you're right, eight years old, I mean, but the warranties are all expired. It's like, we look, I think we have an expectation sometimes for the government, they give us longer warranties, but you look at your car, when does it fail, right? The two-year warranty's up, or my dishwasher, like it did, that's two years, one month, and it stops. My ice maker, it's a new refrigerator, and it just stopped. So, you know, we have to address it, it's a coil, and it's something that Butch, it just was beyond his capability. So they believe it was supposed to come in today, the part, they're hopeful tomorrow, and that it'll be finished this week, and we apologize for any inconvenience, especially in this hot weather. I know how important it is, especially with children. So they were doing their best to remediate the situation.
And I want to thank the staff for accommodating all the programs. We can't make things not break, things happen, and to accuse the town of not maintaining something, how much maintenance do you do on an eight-year-old air conditioning system? You drain the trap in the winter, you don't change your filters in it every now and then. But I do appreciate everybody, because I know it took a big effort to move all the different programs around and accommodate them. You know, I remember back in school, we didn't even have air conditioning, so it was suck it up.
We didn't have it in the house.
Right. And then my last question is, on the roofs that Marie brought up, and Jim, you want, do you want consensus from the council? Just consensus?
Yeah, and I think maybe there was, and I thought we were going to put it on.
Yeah, so did we.
Right? I did too.
So did we.
So I don't know, and even today, when you mentioned, I'm thinking, well, Marie, it's on the agenda, I'm thinking, no, it's not. So a consensus would be enough, because we've already taken formal action, so I believe that would be enough.
Excuse me?
I just want to make sure, if we give a consensus, it's not on the agenda, it's okay.
I'm going to defer to the Town Attorney with that, it's a consensus, it's not a resolution. Yeah, it's not. It is not.
I would say you might as well do it, and then if it's not right, we'll let you know later.
We can add it to the agenda for, we'll give consensus now to add it to the agenda, but go ahead with it.
If you look at item, item 15, any other business, yep, proper, bring it up there.
Okay.
Perfect. That's exactly what I was going to say.
Are we going to take a vote on that?
I'm just going to do a consensus. Well, you want to vote?
No, she don't want either, because it's not on the agenda. We're going to give consensus, we're going to add it to the agenda.
It can be added to the agenda on a two-thirds vote.
Yeah, point of order. I was going to say, I believe we can, if we're in agreement, which I believe we all are, that we can add it to the agenda in new items for any other business, item 15, we can add it to the agenda, vote on it, and we can vote on it tonight, if we have two-thirds of a vote.
Okay, so you're going to do that, because you have other things you want to move to?
Yes, you want me to do that now?
No, in a minute.
Okay.
I'll come back, unless you're still got other things you want to, no. Councilman Nasuda.
I just want to say that we discussed this at the Joint Facilities Meeting on Thursday, and we totally agreed with what Donald wants to do, as far as, well, first of all, the Police Department came in under budget, and then the asbestos and everything they ran out, ran into at the library, it's over budget, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, but they were going to take money from the annex project at this point.
Correct, yes.
That was his intent.
It was in agreement at the Joint Facilities Meeting that we would, in agreement that we would take the funds, because the annex project was the last project, and if any monies were saved, it would go back into that particular roof.
Yep.
But we all agreed to take the additional funds out of the annex for the library and the public safety.
And these numbers are known, he reduced it to a memo, which I shared, so we'll simply say in the vote, in accordance with his memo, to award the contracts as contained therein for the school and the library. Excuse me, the library and the Police Department.
All right, all set, Jim? Okay, anybody else for the Town Manager? Nothing? Moving on to the Town Attorney.
Steve had an item.
Just a few follow-up. Councilor Santinella was asking about the early voting. Early voting times are listed on the Town Clerk's webpage, under the notice of primary, and will be updated on the Register of Voters page tomorrow. But for the folks at home, August 5th through 11th, the early voting will be from 10 to 6 p.m., except for Tuesday, August 6th, and Thursday, August 8th, it'll be from 8 to 8 p.m. And then one other thing, just to echo what Mayor Nelson was saying, I'd like to thank USA Hauling, or USA Waste and Recycling, because they're also a big sponsor of the Summer Concert Series tomorrow night, we got Molato, and then the next week, we got Johnny Sixcon, which was a big hit at the Fourth of July Celebration. He's coming back, and he's a local Billy Gaines man, he's a really great show. That's all I got. Thanks.
Anybody else? Jim?
Isn't there Jazz in the Park coming up too?
Now that you mentioned it, Jazz in the Park will be there, let's see, we have it on this, this will be, I think, in July, the Sunday, last Sunday in July, what day is that?
Well, he's checking, I think we're going to do it earlier in the day, because to coincide more with the market. And I'd like to thank Chris Tetralt, who's here, for all of her efforts. She told me this evening, that Thursday, we had over 30 vendors, and a lot of people came, so I think we'll build with that through the summer, and try to join us for that with the jazz concert coming Sunday.
July 28th, and we're going to start earlier, so they'll be going on while the market is open at the same time, so.
Oh, that's nice.
Okay, yeah.
All set, Steve? Anyone else for the Town, okay, Town Attorney's Report?
I want to request that the next time I get put ahead of Chris, because it's a tough act to follow. Anyway, I have nothing further to report, just a citing counsel, which Mike Ludwig brought up. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. So now we're going to move on to reports of special committees of the council. Mike?
Yeah, so the General Governments Committee has been working on ways that we can help our local farmers through state statute and other tax abatements. I don't know, we had, John Wilcox has been doing a lot of work for us on this, to show the financial impact, and I think, just to give some, the perspective of why we're looking at this, I mean, is that some of the discussion we've had with some of the solar fields, Connecticut Valley has somewhat, is considered some of the richest soil in the world, never mind just Connecticut in the world, and yet we are losing prime farmland every single day to warehouses, and nothing wrong with warehouses or anything of this nature, but if you haven't learned everything, anything over the last four years, the ability to be able to supply food locally, when supply chains are cut off, not only over the world, but in the country, is so important to our survival. And really, the way of looking at this, it's the land. We're not trying to just give a tax break to a certain group, because again, you get into some of the, you pick one, you know, pick and choosing over others. This is about giving folks a chance to stay on their land to farm. And, because again, a lot of times, they can get price, they can get prices that actually allow them to sell it for a higher cost, and they end up selling their property, which they have the right to do. I mean, I'm not against, we're not trying to say we're against that, but we're also trying to find creative ways of keeping people in their family farms, so we have a viable local food source, in case, as things are going on in the world, where again, we're not relying upon the Midwest, somewhere's, you know, farming from, you know, anywhere else, but right here in Enfield. And that's the point of this, and I think, John, if it's up here, I don't know, is this the presentation?
John jumped the gun.
Yeah, and if John want to come up, so what we did is, the General Governments Committee back in April, just real quick, we had a forum with all the farmers, we invited everyone, got some great input. There's three kind of tax breaks we're looking at. It was, one's called the 50% tax break, which again, builds on the 490 status to keep our farms in 490, and they basically have to sell approximately $15,000 worth of product And they basically have to sell approximately $15,000 worth of product a year to be able to qualify for this tax. Again, through the state, through the agriculture commission. We also looked at buildings, given a tax break for buildings, i.e. farms. And then equipment, which the state already actually, a lot of them already qualified for. Here, we're going to show you, we decided because of the way our financial situation is, we didn't want to push it too much, so we're basically just showing you, I think, John, keep me honest, on the 50% tax break, which we'd like to have a public hearing on, you know, for September. We'd like to invite, let the public speak. And again, really, the point is to keep the farm, the land, farmland. That's the key. It's not necessarily just to give to a certain, you know, sector of the economy more of a break, but to make sure that they can afford to stand that land, and again, produce food, which helps us all as a community.
Thank you, Mike. John and I collaborate on the charts, but he likes me to be the spokesman. Remember, there was that comedy team, two of them, and one would speak, the other didn't talk?
Adam and Stella?
Touche, Mike. So, the first part, we just wanted to give you the overall, the commitment that the town already affords farmers by virtue of the public act 490. So if you look at the first part of the chart, the value for the farms as assessed right now, if you look at it, well, the fair market value, excuse me, is $44 million in farmland we have in Enfield. If we were to assess that, basically assessed, if not in 490, the 70% value, we would receive that next number in taxes, excuse me, be worth $30,966, and the taxes we would generate would be about $946,000 a year, almost a million. We do recognize 490, so if you go down below, what that means is that $44 million in property isn't assessed at 30 million, it's assessed by virtue of the state act. $44 million becomes $4,789. That's what we are able to tax. When you base the tax on that, the town receives $145,000 currently. And if you look above it, there's a, there's a delta. Because if you didn't have this exemption, those farmers would be paying almost a million. They're paying $145,000. So by Mike's virtue, again, you could look at equipment, and you could do that, you could look at outbuildings. They've decided to look at this, which is very simple, and that's the bottom part of the chart. Now, if we say we're going to give that additional 50%, what it means now, that $4,700 that we currently have under the public act, we would now only be eligible to tax half of it, which is the $2,300,000. And the bottom line, that is the taxes that we will get in. It's a 50% break. So instead of the $145,000 a year, on all the land that's appropriately under public act 490, we will receive $72,875 if you impose this. Okay?
I just want to make sure that, thank you, Tina or Bob, because it's been a bipartisan discussion. I don't want to speak for you, if you have anything you'd like to say. Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so I was talking with Councilman Hendrickson about this last night. I totally understand what you're trying to do, and I respect that. The problem is, a $5 million piece of land, what we have left to save them is peanuts. I get what you're trying to do. And I even am willing to go a lot farther than that. I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but there's development rights on all property. And I think if the town council or conservation commission, we use our open space fund, fee in lieu of open space, and when we find out a farm's going on the market, the town of Enfield buys the farm, just the property. We turn around and sell the development rights off the property to the federal government, it can never, ever be built. It's forever. This is a year-to-year thing. And I think at that point, we turn around, if the federal government gives us 35 cents on the dollar, we turn around and sell it to farmers, like, you know, Collins Farm. They lease from us now. That piece of land would be a perfect piece of land to explore this option. We're not doing it to make any money, and it could cost us a little bit, but this is going to cost us.
Right, correct.
But this way is permanent. One, it will help keep Enfield looking like Enfield with the farmland and stuff like that, because we're changing, and we hear the people talking about it. There's got to be a balance, but some of these big farms, and I truly would ask that your committee look into this as an option. Two, you know, even if we set aside $5 million for this, or we matched whatever's in the fee in lieu of open space account at the conservation commission, I'm sure they would be on board with this. But be a partner. And we try to address it this way, and this gets you your goal, but forever, after you're long gone, or and I'm long gone, that's going to be, you know, 100 years, somebody's going to say, I want to put a development there, and they're going to say, that, gosh darn, Mike Ludwig, you know, but that's the goal, to keep us fed.
Right, exactly.
And I respect that.
It's the land. It's the land. It's not, we're not trying to give an extra tax break to anybody, but obviously, the benefit, but we lose the land, we don't have viable farms.
Right.
So I mean, it's, so it's one of those. Right, that's why we're trying to be clear, it's for the land. You know, and that's a great suggestion. Again, we went through the conservation commission, they gave us the three options that were, and I think the state was working on, a further tax break for equipment, which I don't think passed. Keep me honest, I think, John, I don't think it passed. So that's why we were focusing on this. But I mean, hey, we're open, again, I think the goal, the goal is, to your point, we want to keep Enfield looking the way Enfield looks, because we do have diversity in our economy. We're growing them all, we have other things, small businesses, we have some corporations, but we also need farming, not only for survival, but also for our economy. And that's, and I, this is a great suggestion. You know, John, I don't know if you have any comments, or I don't want to speak for you.
I'm unfamiliar with the, with the selling of the development rights and stuff like that, so I'd have to look into that one more.
One of our largest parcels of land in Enfield is out on Laughlin Road. And, you know, when you're selling those houses, people are, people should be asking what's going there, because it's not a zoning issue with farming. And that is the biggest misunderstanding that people have when they buy a home. Well, it's farmland. There's no such thing as farmland. But when you tell them the development rights have been sold on that land, it will never be built. It may not be farmed, but it'll end up a forest again someday, but never, ever, ever can they change that. So we have it in town, there's pieces next to the new solar field they're putting up. Thank God, they sold the development rights on the property. And, you know, it's a good tool for farmers too, because it helps them through the tough struggling times, so. But great plan, and if we can look into that too.
I just want to say thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I did also do some research on that. It is, there's all different programs all over the country on that. So it, there is a more, there is a higher cost upfront, but to protect it is something that we should look at. And if we do do a public hearing, maybe that's part of it, whatever, we do some research on it.
It's just, my way is more of a permit, yes, it is a little costly upfront, depending on what they're willing to pay us. And I think that depends on what you can produce on that land. So there's a lot to it, but it's something I really think we should look into.
Can we make, can we make that request from the mayor to the conservation commission too? I mean, probably, they would be the first, because they're very, I know they're watching tonight, and they're very interested in having us move this forward. So maybe if they're paying attention, mayor's request through the manager to the conservation commission, we'd love to be able to work with them.
I mean, move them both forward, yours too, move it forward.
I will say that Connecticut last year did spend the most amount of money saving farmland with the preservation money and everything.
And there was a great article, I think, that was in the Connecticut State Agriculture. And again, it's, if you believe it, we are, we are considered some of the richest land soil in the world, and it'd be a shame to continue to just let it sort of be openly developed, for lack of a better word.
Agree. Anybody else?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks to the mayor and leadership and the manager for bringing this, because I mean, John and the general governance committee has been working on this since February, we're going to continue it, we think it's very important. And we're certainly, to the, like, the mayor, any suggestions we're not thinking about, please let us know. Because again, we're, the goal is to save our farmland. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Beautiful. Thank you. Thank you, Mike, and thanks to the committee. John, thank you very much.
Appreciate the information, John.
Okay, moving on to the, we have no unfinished business tonight.
No, I had, I'm sorry, I did have one report from, so the blight committee, just for the public's knowledge, so the blight committee has been working through revisions to the blight ordinance in town. In addition to out-of-state license plates, the second biggest complaint I get is blight in a lot of the blighted properties that we have. The blight committee has been doing a lot of work to clear off some of the blighted properties and get them back on the tax roll, but we have been also revising our ordinance. We are hoping to have a public hearing in September for the council and for members of the public to come in and address some issues that, I think we have some differing opinion, and we would like the public's input. Some of those things relate to whether blight needs to be visible from the public way, or whether it needs to be visible from your yard, whether blight complaints need to be anonymous at all times, or whether you, I'm sorry, whether you need to put your name on a blight complaint, or whether they can be anonymous. We have some fair disagreements about what is best for us to be effective, and we are hoping to get the public's input. And so I think we are hoping to get that public hearing scheduled for sometime in September, and we'll ask the town manager to post it, and we'll certainly make that known to, to people as well. So that's my committee report. And with that, I would like to, go ahead.
On your committee report, John, I just want to say, this is a bipartisan effort, because me and John disagree on, you know, should it be from a public roadway, which I say yes, because you shouldn't be able to go upstairs in your back corner of your window and look at a neighbor's yard four houses down and make a complaint. And because we disagree on this, we agree that, let's listen to the public, let's see what their input is on this, because ultimately, we represent them. So this is a good thing from the committee, and it's, we'll move forward with it, and hopefully in September, we can wrap it up. And one more thing is, people are going to start receiving letters from the town of Enfield. If you've had a blight violation on your property, and your fines are substantial, and fines, I'm talking $50,000 up to $350,000, we're trying to resolve them as a town. We're trying to stop this. We found issues on the town side that we're addressing on blight, and one of the issues is, residents don't realize, when they get a blight fine for their grass is too tall, just mowing the grass doesn't stop it. They have to notify the town to come out and inspect, and the fines keep accruing. People go seven years without stopping the fines. So we're just trying to get these off the books of the town of Enfield. We have had, I'm going to say, nine out of 10 people who actually got the letters, saying that we want to resolve this, who have come in, the ones who came in. The ones who didn't come in, that's shame on them. But the ones who came in, nine out of 10 of them, blight, and this town council has worked with these residents to resolve the issue, at little to no cost to them, just so we can all move on. Our goal is not to take anybody's house, but our goal is that we should live in healthy neighborhoods, and one house shouldn't take the values down of an entire neighborhood. That's what the goal is, is to get them fixed up and get them back out there. So thank you, John. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion now to move items B-1 through B-8. These are all the appointments that are on the agenda. To item 13A, the consent agenda, we have no objection to any of the people who we are appointing, and if we get two-thirds vote to move it to the consent agenda, we could just get through all of those in one vote.
Second motion made, second.
Did you want to add to the agenda the roofs?
Can we do that now?
I think when we get there.
Later, later.
You sure? Okay. All right. All set, John?
Yes, I'm just going to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Congratulations to everyone. So now we are on to C, the resolution to modify the open space easement at 1618 Mullen Road. Do you have any updates on that, Chris?
I don't, but the town attorney does.
Okay.
He likes to make an entrance.
Okay, so what are we on?
The easement for Mullen Road, C. Next page.
Okay, thank you. Yes, actually, I have some extensive comments on it. The town attorney's office was not aware of this entire transaction until last Thursday, and so we've had limited time to look at things, but I did make an effort over the weekend and Friday and today also, to get up to date on it, because I think it's important when you have an open space easement that you want to change the use of, as, you know, it's supposed to be in perpetuity. So if you bear with me, on this particular property, July 11th of 2002, that the property owner got a re-subdivision approval on the basis of identifying open space as an easement granted in favor of the town of Enfield, with the responsibility of maintaining that open space and the liability to remain with the property owner. So the town of Enfield was receiving the open space, and they were not going to be responsible for maintaining it, nor for any liability. On May 20th of 2003, the open space easement was officially recorded on the land records, and that easement specifically recited that the PCC, the commission, has determined it would be in the public interest to obtain an easement, as shown on the aforementioned map, to be maintained in perpetuity as open and undeveloped space. So the open space easement itself, when we looked at it and read it, it did say, it specifically prohibited the placing of drainage systems on the open space easement area. That's in 2.8. And number three of A, though, of that easement, it does say that the property owner could request modification of the open space easement for drainage, and then it has this quote, provided that the same does not, do not interfere with or have an adverse impact on the natural and open space values being protected within the easement area. So the town council, tonight, you have discretion in deciding whether or not to grant any and all modification requests. There was no further standards given in terms of how to evaluate it. The request that comes in, it looks like, more like a, they want to change the open space easement to a drainage easement. And in so doing, I did review emails, P&amp;Z records, copies of the recorded easement, a letter in from the attorney at Holler and Sage requesting this, seeking approval for the modification. And then today, I also met with the town engineer and Lori Witten, and went over some of this with them. I asked them to give me all the maps they had with reference to things, so I was able to look at, look at them also. And so my question to them was, that if this drainage easement that they're seeking now, or the easement modification, but I'm going to call it drainage easement they're seeking, if they had that rather than the open space easement back when the re-subdivision was granted 23 years ago, would the application have been denied? And the answer is yes, because it's a drainage easement, not an open space easement. And then, when I looked at one of the maps, and years later, for a site plan approval, I couldn't find where the open space easement was on the map. And John Cabibbo was kind enough to show me where it was supposed to be, but it's not there. And Lori Witten also agreed that on this particular site plan approval that came through a few years ago, that it just wasn't caught by anybody, but this open space easement was not depicted on the map like it was supposed to be. Then we found that there's some riprap in the open space easement area that apparently was put in for drainage, and the, in the highlights, it is, it does say that this was done years ago, so somebody put in riprap for drainage in the open space easement area. My opinion at this stage is, forget about it, in terms of going to try to enforce and get somebody to change it and put, put the property back into its natural state. Although, it does appear as though that riprap has helped in terms of the drainage, so a very small portion of this open space easement has this riprap rock in it. And I also asked the town engineer, that with these approvals, or these applications that come in, I was under the impression that during peak water runoff, or storms, you're supposed to have a zero surface water runoff for volume and velocity. So he said that that is what's proposed by the applicant, and what was proposed in each of the prior re-subdivision, site plan approval, and so on. So then the question is, well, then if there's a zero surface water runoff, what's the need for modifying an open space easement that doesn't include drainage? And just, there was no answer to that. So then, the other thing that's in the easement itself says, that if you're going to consider modification for the drainage, the quote in the easement that's recorded says, provided that the same do not interfere with, or have an adverse impact on the natural and open space values being protected within the easement area. So again, you have the discretion, but right now, you don't have any duty to maintain, you don't have liability, and... And when I do a risk and reward type of evaluation or analysis, and again, I did this with the town engineer and Lori Witten, and I asked, well, what rewards does the town receive if you were to grant this modification? And the answer is there aren't any. So it's kind of easy for me to look at it and say, well, you do bear some risks because right now you don't have any risk or liability, but if you do something here and it doesn't work right, then there could be some potential liability on it. The other thing is that when I was going through the materials with Lori and John, I asked, what proposals did they make because there was any other proposals that were less invasive or would still, you know, not impact adversely the natural state of the land there? And so what Lori had put in an email back last Thursday was that she thought that they believed they can eliminate the riprap channel. That's the one I was telling you about that they put in. But they probably would need town council approval to do that. And my recommendation is, don't make them eliminate the riprap. It's working and so it's been there for so many years, it's not worth trying to figure out now, who did it? What did they do? And let's go in and have some enforcement action about something that appears to be working because nobody's had any problems if complained about it. And as long as we're not liable, I'd say leave that alone, which then eliminates the need for the town council approval on that. And she then continued on with, "Or they can eliminate discharge within the open space, modify a swale and drain outside of the open spaces, which would take all of the activity out of open space and then hence it takes the onus off the town and there's no need for action by the town council." So that's my recommendation and I did review everything on the basis of the resolution that I had over the weekend to work with. And tonight's resolution, which is a little bit different, talks about instead of modifying the open space easement, it talks about having the town council authorize the use of open space for drainage and then subject to review, town attorney and so on. That's even worse than just taking this particular property and evaluating an open space easement because I don't think you want to get into authorizing the use of open space for drainage throughout the whole town. I just think it's set a bad precedent and I'm very, very aware of circumstances and cases involving the town where this has happened, where they've taken water from one person, dumped it on somebody else. They've taken open spaces for a war hero, you know, wise during the Korean Warfighter whose mother gave a piece of property to the town of Enfield to have on the Skantic River to have a nice little recreational area with a bench and a fountain and dedicated to the town. The town took it, said, "Thank you very much." And then after she had moved, they thought she was dead, they put a sewer pumping station there. She wasn't dead and ended up suing. And it's just one of these things that I think when you give something or take it in perpetuity for the purpose for which this was given and intended, my recommendation is you keep it that way. And particularly here where I happen to have specific personal knowledge of this land because one of the parcels was in my wife's family for about 100 years. She inherited it from her uncle and sold it to Connecticut Mulch in 2012. There was no riprap there in 2012. So sometime between then and now, it got put in. I don't, I don't want to cast dispersions, I don't think anybody did it knowing they were violating this open space. You're talking about farmland, you know, at the time. So, you know, farmers do a lot of things and try to correct the drainage with riprap or swales and so on. So I don't think there was any intent whatsoever to violate the ordinances, violate the rules, violate any of this stuff. But I just think with what's going on next door and with the neighbors that are already there and with this proposal that's in, there's a lot of moving parts that I don't want to see the town of Enfield as an officious interloper into this. It's almost like it's, we don't have a duty and I think if anything, you probably want to keep it in perpetuity like it was intended to be. But anyway, that's my evaluation. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Tom. You did good because I've been working on this for about a month and I called a meeting with Chris. Marie was invited in with Lori Witten and the town engineer and I'm like, no way. I know personally of a lawsuit that costs this town a million plus dollars between legal fees and everything for this exact reason. I did go out to the neighboring property. I called the owner, asked for permission to go on the property. I walked it. He subdivided, he put parking lots, he did everything and he was required to put in two detention ponds. And across the back of his property, he also has open space with a right to drain in it. And these people want to use his open space to get their water, which ultimately ends up in his new detention ponds that he built only for his property. Now, when these detention ponds swell up in the 100-year storm, that water's going to continue to go. Where does it end up? Eventually it ends up on the property behind it, which is going to be a new Winstanley warehouse. Looking at that map, well, that's a big piece of land. Where's he building? It's right there. So 100%, this is when me and Chris said, you know what? This has to go to the town attorney because I'm a dead no on it because all the years I've been building, you cannot divert water to somebody else's property. Can't do it. And this does that. So I'm saying no. I mean, if you guys respect what I've done for 40 years and trust in my knowledge of it, along with Tom, I think you would agree, this is a no-win situation for the abutters and the future of Winstanley. Because when that 100-year storm floods and his parking lots go underwater, we made the change. We put the stamp on it. So I will be a no on this. So at this point, be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council authorizes the use of the open space for drainage, subject to review, possible modifications and final written approval by the town attorney. Respectfully submitted. It's, this is an open?
It's not.
It's...
You should have come up under Public Communications.
Representing the owner of...
Right. You should have come up under Public Communications and addressed something to, I don't know if I can allow...
It has to be a phone to the council.
I don't know. I think you guys should all just have a meeting.
We had the meeting. We had the meeting. We had the meeting, Gina. Again, we've had a bunch of meetings. I mean, as an attorney, you cannot, you gotta know, you can't allow water to flow across somebody else's property. You can't.
Okay. It has nothing to do with my profession. All I said was I think you should have a meeting, but I appreciate you pointing out that I'm an attorney.
So...
Table it.
No, I'm not tabling it. No.
You might want to move the question, Mr. Mayor.
Right. So I read the resolution. I need a motion.
Second.
No, I need a motion.
Motion, I'm confused.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now there's questions.
Right, now we have discussion.
Okay. So is there a way he can speak or do you guys want to allow him to speak? Councilman Mangini?
With all due respect, I don't think we can do that.
Right.
Because we rule on a lot of these issues and if you start going with the back and forth at this juncture, I don't want to limit public debate. I'm going to have Steve go out and speak to him right now, get his information. I assure you and him that we'll bring you in, we'll talk to you. You know, this is always, and this is totally gratuitous, but it's always a balance. We want to accommodate builders. That's what staff was trying to do here. It's a unique circumstance. Town attorney has alerted us to a risk of it because we've been down this path before. So no one's wrong here. There are no villains. We have three great developers, three great companies, and I'm sure this gentleman will be one of them. So we will work with him to accommodate him on it. So I would move the question here. We'll get his information and we will talk to you in the morning. We can have him come in and talk with engineering and Lori, perhaps the town attorney. We'll accord you every respect moving forward so that you can successfully complete the project without impacting anybody else and having future headaches. So we will work with you. I assure you of that.
And we did come up with several different solutions.
And they've been talking right up till today. Time just got away. They've been working on it since June, but with the press of business and the budget, we weren't able to accommodate, but staff did try and they have been speaking with the town attorney. We just ran out of runway on this one. So, Mike.
So again, the mayor, so again, the whole...
I thought I was recognized.
In proprietary, whatever the word is.
I thought you recognized me, you know?
I'm sorry. So that, when we do these things, right? So you make these agreements, that's what it means. You know, I'm not, you're right, I'm not questioning anyone's motives or anything, but prior councils, prior decisions were made that this was going to stay open space. We just had this conversation with farmland, right? Again, I agree. We make an agreement, we say that's what it's going to be, and I think we need to honor these agreements and work, find other solutions. I'm not an expert on moving water from properties, but, and if I understood you through the mayor to town attorney, the riprap there now technically is a violation of the open space agreement, correct? If I understood your analysis?
That's correct.
So, right, so I, yeah, I mean, I hate to say this, I agree with, I mean, I don't hate to say, I agree with the mayor. We make these agreements for certain reasons and open space is important. We've been committed as a council about open space and keeping farmland. I mean, I know I'm committed because it's, we want to keep the beauty of our open space. I think we need to honor these agreements. And it sounds like the agreement already technically is being violated, which I completely understand your analysis. I'm not suggesting we should go, I'm not saying anything wrong, but again, we do have an open space ordinance and we passed that, I think, last year, that we're trying to honor, to show people, look, we do value our open space. So I have to, I agree with the mayor on this one. So, thank you.
Along the lines with that, Councilman Ludwig, nothing upsets me more than being a developer. We can go through the town right now and you look at all the detention ponds for these big neighborhoods. You know what it is? It's the open space they donated to the town. So they use all their usable land and then donate the crap land that can't be developed or they used it for their detention basin. That's, that has to stop. If we can't use it for recreation and passive recreation, we don't want it. Pay the fee in lieu and you can use the property. So like this particular property, I'm sure they can go back to planning and zoning and instead of donating the open space, do a fee in lieu of open space or something. We've even discussed about changing the drainage to Mullen Road. If they have to up the size of the drainage pipes, then they have to up the size. But to allow it to flow across other properties and through conservation and flood out, whatever's in there, because there is a box turtle or something in that area, so. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought I was recognized before.
You were. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I am not comfortable voting on this. I would ask for it to be tabled. I knew nothing about any meetings that took place to discuss this issue and I don't think any of my colleagues on my caucus had any information prior to tonight having, being presented with the resolution. So I would respectfully ask for this to be tabled where we could have more information, more discussion on this.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor of tabling it? Four in favor. The motion fails. Any other questions on this? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Counselor Ludwig.
Against.
Councilman Mangini.
Against.
Councilor Nisuda.
Against.
Mayor Nelson.
Against.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Against.
Counselor Santinella.
Against.
Counselor Sikala.
Against.
Counselor Crissati.
Against.
And Counselor Finger.
Hendrickson.
Oops, sorry, Hendrickson.
Against.
Sorry. Zero in favor, nine against.
Sorry, Doug.
Sorry, Doug.
Okay. So now we're going to move on to the resolution referring the proposed purchase of 78 Main Street for an 8-24 referral to the planning and zoning. This is the Gray's Building. They're working on the purchase and sale agreement as we speak. And as always, when the town gets involved in property, we have to refer to planning and zoning. So, any questions? Let me read the resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the proposed purchase of 78 Main Street is referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission in conformance with the requirements of the Connecticut General Statute 8-24. Date prepared, 7/12/2024, prepared by Lori Witten, Director of Planning.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Councilman Ludwig.
Just Chris, through the mayor to town mayor. So we're close to purchasing this property. I mean, I want to make sure, I mean, because I have, this process always gets me a little, you know...
Yeah, we're going to get the formal referral. My understanding, you know, the town attorney has yet to really, my understanding is that they voted to give it to us, but the devil's in the details. What will the value be? Who's going to be responsible for the demolition? So we're referring it to planning and zoning so we don't lose any time and then we'll be talking about the issues of what agreement, and that'll come back before you, once planning and zoning is approved.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All set, Mike? Anyone? John?
Clarify, I just, this was not on the leadership agenda, correct?
We talked about it.
Did we talk about this?
Yeah. Remember Chris got upset because he hasn't, he didn't hear anything and...
You said you were in favor.
Yeah. This is your rooftop bar.
No, no, I understand. I just, my apologies to my caucus because when we met the other day, I didn't remember that conversation. So I just wanted to be clear.
Well, we're going to, we're going to be even then, John, because you're right, you were there for that portion. And in regard to the other, we don't have any meeting, I just want you to be clear on the meeting that they're saying, Gina and Cindy, about in regard to the prior subject. It's my bad. I, we have like Donald Noon come in and we've had other directors come in during leadership to give his information, like on the roof to see if we should put it on the agenda. When the mayor had a question about this, I said to Lori and Cabibbo, come at 1:00, we're having leadership. Leadership was at 1:30. So they showed up and all we did is say, refer to the town attorney. He wasn't there because it was such a pressing issue and you had come in, John, after at 1:30. So that's my apology. I try to do those so everybody can be part of it. So you were there for the other one, but you weren't there for this one. So we'll try to, I think we pretty much get it right, but once in a while.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nisuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
And Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, next is a resolution authorizing the town manager, or the town manager to enter into an agreement for real estate agency services. And I don't have the resolution. Be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize the town manager or their designee to sign and enter into an agreement with DeFranco Realty Inc. for a period of time not to exceed five years to provide the town with real estate agency services subject to the review and approval of the town attorney. Date prepared, 7/24, prepared by the Office of Economic and Community Development.
So moved. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Cynthia?
Thank you. I just would like to support this group. You and I were at the meeting. Thank you. I just would like to support this group. You and I were at the meeting, both me, well, two out of the three. I would like to offer a friendly amendment to the resolution, asking in the contract for the town and DeFranco Realty, a 90-day notice for an out.
Six months. It's in there. We're going to do six months because your listing agreement would supersede this.
Okay.
So if you were to list the property for the town for six months, even though you terminate this, you're still the Realtor.
Right.
So by doing a six-month out on this, there will never be an overlap. It would sever the ties with the company. I said the same thing, Cindy, but because it was, I think it was 30 days before.
We get six months normal for listing. Okay.
Yep.
So that gives the town the option.
And DeFranco.
And DeFranco. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mike.
Again, I just want to commend the folks. I think this is a very effective program. It was in the past with other agencies. So I appreciate everyone doing this. Steve running it. It looks like the folks who are listed on this, the resolution, the mayor, Counselor Mangini, Steve, Aaron, and Christie. This is really an effective arrangement. I mean, we've had a lot of success. And I know we have other properties that we're looking to sort of put out there. So I think I'm going to support this. And I think this is a great idea. So thanks, everyone who interviewed the four or five interviewees. So thank you.
Anyone else? So I will just say I was in the interviews with Christie and Aaron. I think Steve, you were there. And this company, the owner of this company actually came out and spoke with us. And the knowledge he has of Enfield and Thompsonville, growing up in the area, and preservation, we talked about Parsons House. He asked questions about properties that we have that weren't part of the interview, like Nathan Hale. How's it being marketed? You know, has anybody put a plan forward? What does the council want to happen to that building? Housing, warehouse? I mean, what do they want? And he said, there's so much more. And then again, going through all the town-owned property that we have, you know, that's doing nothing for anybody, sell the development rights on it and let's get it out to the farmers. So, but he just, he opened it up. He had one of his staff members with him and he just went on and on and on. And it was, let me, I've been in real estate and this guy just blew me away. So, great. Congratulations to them and hopefully everybody supports it. Roll call.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nissuta.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
And Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. This is a resolution to authorize the foreclosure of property maintenance fines for 128 Green Manor Road. Be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize the foreclosure of 128 Green Manor Road for the property maintenance fines associated with the property maintenance lien recorded December 1, 2023, at volume 2890, page 71. Date prepared 7/12/2024, prepared by the Office of Economic and Community Development.
So moved. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any questions? Now, this is a particular property that has been a problem property. And Christie, who has done phenomenal things for this town, works for the town, has reached out. She's done every single thing we've asked. If the people don't want to acknowledge it and don't want to fix the problems, this is, we have no choice. The fines are escalating and nothing's getting done. So, Councilman Santinella.
Yeah. So just so people understand what we're doing here, this, this individual was given this in a, in an estate. She wants nothing to do with the property. She's moved out of town. Currently, he is moved out of town. I am, my apologies. And I believe currently the neighbors are actually maintaining the property so that it's not in such terrible condition. He's been contacted, has no interest in this, and we really don't have any other options. So this was a unanimous decision from blight to move forward with this. Thank you.
And just to be clear, the house is vacant. Siding's fallen off it. Cars would smash windows in the driveway. And like Councilman Santinella said, neither one of the heirs want anything to do with the house. So our hands are tied. We're not making somebody homeless here. We're just trying to get the property back, you know, respectable. So this is the only way we can do it. Okay, roll call.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nissuta.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
And Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, the next one is a resolution to authorize a reduction of property maintenance fines for 48 Quaker Lane. Be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize property maintenance fines associated with the lien recorded September 24, 2021, in volume 2814, page 625, on 48 Quaker Lane, to be reduced to $500. Date prepared 7/12/2024, prepared by Office of Economic and Community Development.
So moved. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Now, this one, the gentleman did show up. This was a situation, I believe, Councilman Ludwig knew the house well. A tree fell in one of the storms, broke the fence, hit the pool. Dad and mom live in Indiana. Their son lives in the house. They tried to get prices to get the tree removed. It was through COVID. They finally got the tree removed. And again, had no idea they were supposed to call for an inspection. Fines kept accruing. He's here on vacation with his wife, visiting his son, opens his mail, and opens a letter saying that the town of Enfield wants this huge dollar amount. And please contact us. And he did. And he called Christie. He came in. He sat with us. And it was a great meeting, very nice family. And the property is spotless. It was spotless before the tree. It was spotless after the tree. He just, nobody knew to can't say, hey, we fixed this. And it kept growing. So the entire committee voted unanimous to reduce the fines to $500. He is okay with that. And that's that. Any other questions? Roll call.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nissuta.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
And Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Nine in favor, none against.
A resolution accepting a donation from Advanced Auto Parts Distribution Center. Now therefore be it resolved, the town council does accept this donation from Advanced Auto Parts Distribution Center, 300 Shaker Road. So this one, they're changing lines over. Sorry. Thank you, Gina. Thank you. Okay. This one here, we're told that they are changing lines over and stuff like that at Advanced Auto Parts Warehouse. This is all brand-new stuff. There are pictures of pallets worth of stuff that they're donating to the town of Enfield. And I see what's on those pallets and I wish I knew about it before the town found out, because it'd be going to my house. I personally want to thank Advanced Auto Parts for thinking of the town. And again, this is another company that is a true partnership within the town, and I really appreciate it. So.
And Mr. Mayor, the Public Works estimates the value of this donation is $100,000 in oils, grease, tire cleaners, and equipment. It's extraordinary.
Yeah.
It's great. Anybody else? Roll call.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nissuta.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
And Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, the next one is a request for transfer of funds for Town Hall Campus Wayfinding signage, $40,000. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from COVID-19 funds, DPW Generator Transfer Switch Replacement Machinery and Equipment, $40,000, to COVID-19 funds, Town Hall Campus Signage, $40,000. Date prepared 7/11/24, prepared by Donald T. Noon's, Director of Public Works.
So moved. Second.
Motion's made and seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As those of you who have come here this evening, have been visiting Town Hall, we've had some extensive renovation and construction work still being done outside for the parking area, lighting for the bandshell, grass there, electrical to the bandshell, plantings and whatnot that council previously, and we're going back a couple of years when I was here last and then when I returned, funded to be completed. Also, we've purchased next door 810 Enfield Street. We're going to be moving departments from Town Hall there. And we currently own the Enfield Express next to it. So now all this parking behind it, when people come into Town Hall, where do I go? What do I do? Everything has to be re-signed. And we're doing it for, for the convenience and to direct people coming in. It's very frustrating. I know back in, well, years ago, when we were talking about school security, it was things that you wouldn't really think about that the security experts said were so important, like vacant, poorly lit stairwells. That's for most assaults and bad things happen in schools and town buildings. We've addressed it here and throughout the town. In regard to this parking, I want when people come in, they say, you know, somebody comes in with a tax dispute or a question, they're not always coming here for a happy reason. And when they get lost, because the signs are inadequate and they park, you know, in the upper lot and they come to this building and to be, signage is critical. We're doing it all in-house to the best of our ability. But the sign shop doesn't have the engraving equipment that they need for some of the signs to, these are going to be long-lasting signs. We want to do it once and hope they last, you know, 25, 30 years. I defer to Jim, what's the life expectancy of good signage? But a lot of it, given what they're, they're making it of, some of them, you know, we have to purchase it and it's expensive because it's going to last the test of time. But we have temporary signs now for visitors coming in to direct them. But we want to be able to make it clear for taxes, we go here. Building Department here. Visitors, upper lot. Park here for the, we'd like to mark on those other lots. Here is the parking for the bandshell. Here's the parking if you're going to park for the placcape. So when people come in, they know where to go. There's a good flow and we reduce the anxiety and the confusion of people coming here to do business. If it's under 40,000, we'll let you know and we'll return it. It is ARPA funds. And I've talked to both Toby from the sign shop, Donald, so is Steve. We've met with them repeatedly. We have actually SLR who's doing a lot of, there's a science to signage. And they've also come in to look and advises as to how appropriately do ingress, egress, what the best signs are. It is, it is a science. It's an art form to a degree. So we want it to not only be just pleasing, so it is attractive for this beautiful town hall and town complex that we're going to have in a couple of months, but that people can readily know where they're going and reduce any confusion, especially in emergencies. So that's what this is about. We'd like your support.
Thank you. Any other questions? Just, I have one, Chris. With the new signage, were there'll be like a mayor's parking spot only put in or no?
You could do that at your own risk. If you want us to put that up in front of your vehicle, we could do that for you. I don't know if it would be prudent, but.
All right. Roll call, please.
No.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nissuta.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you. This next one is the authorization to locate and obtain a bucket truck from the military surplus 1033 equipment program. Be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby approve this resolution. Date prepared 7/11/24, prepared by Chief Arlick J. Fox, Enfield Police Department.
So moved.
Chris, did you want to give an update on it?
The chief of police brought this to our attention as he does from time to time when there's surplus military equipment. He keeps it within a radius, basically going only as far as we can drive and return in the same day. A lot of this equipment emanates from bases in Pennsylvania. This is kind of a preapproval. When these items go on the block by the government, their municipalities scoop them up very quickly. Within minutes, he said, some of them are desirable equipment. So we're going to get preapproval. So if one is listed, they'll be able to go. They'll inspect it. They look at it. It has to be drivable. They bring it back to Public Works. They assess it. The need for a bucket truck in town is that we do have one that Public Works uses for lighting, putting up flags and whatnot. But it's older. It does break down. And there are certain circumstances where the police need to use it for their own purposes with their camera system and other things they do around town. So this will give us a backup and also give one that the police don't have to wait and borrow it from a surrounding community if there's a time-sensitive case that they're working on.
Councilman Santinella.
Yeah. I have no problem with us doing this. Just, this resolution is very nonspecific. So I'm not, I'm not trying to be difficult, but shouldn't this say that, you know, we're authorizing the acquisition of a free bucket truck or something that, I just don't, this is very, we approved this resolution.
We could take, we could adjourn and have the time, maybe in an hour or two, we could come back. No, I'm being cute. You can make any amendment. You can make any amendment, John. I'd have to just pass it by the town attorney. I think the intent is a bucket truck. But if you want to offer a friendly amendment and that's, they're so disposed to make it a little clearer.
It doesn't. In the narrative, it says in the bucket. But it, what we're actually authorizing is not, the resolution, if I'm off on this, please somebody say something.
You should make a friendly amendment.
Yeah. So I think that, you know.
And this is good, John, because I'm going to make it clear to the chief that this is the only time he submitted something that wasn't perfect. And that you caught it, thank goodness.
Yeah. So I think that it says, needs to say, be it resolved that the town council does hereby authorize the town to acquire a bucket truck from, what is the name of the program? The Military Surplus Program.
So moved. Second.
Any other questions? All in favor of the amendment to the resolution. Unanimous. Any other questions on the, go ahead.
I just don't want them coming back with a Sherman tank or something like that.
Understood.
You'd never know. You'd never know. That's right, for free.
I agree. So through the mayor, again, I know the chief's not here through the mayor of town, again, this is, people, he does a great job with this program. I mean, I think people don't realize, I mean, it's, it's pretty solid equipment. And I mean, again.
Some of it's like new, Mike. It's unbelievable. They say surplus. It hasn't even been opened.
I agree. I mean, people don't realize the value of this program. I know the chief does a fantastic job with this. And I hope we're able to get the bucket truck. So I just, I know he's not here. I wish he was. But through the mayor to you to relay to him, again, I think he does a great job with this program. Thank you.
I will convey your sentiments.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nissuta.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
And Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you. The next is a resolution to revise two job descriptions. Be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby approve the revised Town Hall Receptionist job description and approves the revised Administrative Assistant job description. Date prepared 7/8/24, prepared by Stephen Belinda, Assistant Town Attorney.
So just to elaborate further on what the town manager was saying, how we were dealing with signage and the ingress and egress of cars, the receptionist position is dealing with the ingress and egress of people. We are changing a lot of different formats here, traffic flow. Quite simply, patrons of Town Hall will be coming to the upper lot and they'll be going in the front door. No more are going to be coming to the rear entry of the building and wondering in amazement, where am I going? Looking at this, this bulletin board that is obsolete. They're going to be greeted with a friendly face and they're going to be directed on where to go. I've already seen with my own eyes, positive reviews of patrons coming to the building, thankful that they are talking to someone and they know where they're going. So that's the town clerk position. We hired back one of the former receptionists, I'm sorry, that Town Hall Receptionist position, we hired one back. And once we approve this job description, I'm going to go out to the marketplace and get someone else. The other job description is really, it's a godsend. It's going to be an administrative position, both in HR and in the town manager's office. Because they're both confidential positions, we will have the flexibility of move people back. Her name is Stephanie, and if you haven't met her yet, she's doing yeoman's work. With the absence of the UConn intern who's gone, we need help. And Cheryl the absence of the UConn intern who's gone, we need help. And Cheryl, she's a workhorse. We love her, but apparently she wants to take a vacation maybe once in a while. And that leaves Chris and I doing copies and answering phones, and I'm not even sure Chris is doing that. So.
Not well.
Not well. So we need backup, but it's not a full-time position. So as the work ebbs and flows between those two departments, we can shift her back and forth. And it's the perfect Goldilocks job description, not too big, not too small, just right. And she fills in at the front receptionist position, too. We can mix and match, and it's a non-union position. We have the autonomous mover wherever we need her. So.
And I would just echo, this is part of the process. We start to update job descriptions to accurately reflect what people really do. And number two, I will just say, you know, previously, we had in that office, a manager, an assistant manager, an executive secretary, and executive assistant. Now we have the manager, a part-time, half-time assistant manager, who's also HR director. We have one secretary, and we don't have the other executive. So you can't run a town this size without the appropriate personnel. So we're trying to be responsive so that when we need her in my office, when Cheryl goes, and like next week, we have somebody there to answer the phone and answer the doors, but likewise, she can go to HR. She's also, as Steve said, a trooper. She was down filling in for the reception position. And this is what we want, people who willing, under their job description, and Bob knows it, too, to plug them into different areas, and they're not going to say, well, it's not my job. I don't want to do it. So we're trying to make the job descriptions reflect that. They've got to be flexible, and we've got to be able to use them where we need them, because our workforce is going to be less. So we've got to be able to put people where we need them, when we need them. And I will just say, and we put it up on Facebook, we've mentioned it, we phased it in, people are asked now to come in the front of the building. The signage is reflecting that. Our handicap is still in the back. For those who want to come in, there's a camera-controlled entry. But for years, and you can talk to any person working in Town Hall, we find people wandering around in the basement and the stairwells. What kind of Town Hall brings people into a basement stairwell? They don't know if they're on the basement, the first, and all day long, we direct them. They're coming to, people, and I'm telling you, unbiasedly, the two receptions that are covering, people are thanking them, thank you. They come in, and it's, I mean, you know how many times they're up in the manager's office? I say, you got to go back down to the registrar. Or I say, well, the tax office has been next door for almost three years. And they're, they look at you with, oh, my, I'm going to, we're eliminating all that. This, and also, we should just, the basic safety issue of the Town Hall employees and visitors and staff, we should know who's in our building. And when people are coming in back stairwells and going up to a third, we can't do it. We've had a lot of close calls. We've been lucky. I won't get into the details. We've shared them with council, but I think this is good for our internal staff. We know who's here. The safety of our residents, though, is what's paramount. And now they get guidance when they come in, and it's much, most people are going to the clerk, but this way, they can use the elevator, and everything's marked very clearly, and I think it's going to be a much better system. So we ask for your support on these two job descriptions.
Okay, I, just real quick, I'd like to, this is signed by Steve Belinda, Assistant Town Attorney.
You caught that, huh? Well, given the cuts, we're now going to add, we're going to add him, because Tom needs help. So he'll be doing HR, Assistant Manager, and Assistant Town Attorney. There's no pay increase, Steve, but.
Actually, I was going to seek privilege of the floor to make the correction, because he's really not Assistant Town Attorney. He's Assistant Interim Town Attorney. So there is a big difference.
So do we need to make a motion to amend this, to change?
No, I don't think you need to do that, just for purposes of the record.
Okay, just for clarification, it was the Assistant Town Manager who signed it. Councilman Ludwig.
The Town, I mean, it's to the office, right? The assistant to the assistant, right? So again, I mean, Steve, these are the things we've done, we used to do very well. And people don't realize, giving folk, I have no problem paying people more money as they take on more work. Again, this is what we need to get back to, and I appreciate it, that you're doing this, giving folks a chance to make money, give them a chance to broaden their career and skills, not just set into a job description, and that's your job description, that's all you're doing. I mean, this is so important, because we had, this was so important three, four years ago. So I appreciate you doing this, and also, the key point, we talked about this in the budget. So I appreciate you remembering the conversation that we had, and we were a little bit concerned just bringing someone on strictly for one job. So I appreciate you remembering that, because we did have this discussion during the budget, and thank you for recognizing that, that again, we're trying to get as much as we can out of taxpayer money, and again, give people a chance to make money and do different jobs.
People have to wear mini hats now.
So thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Roll call.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Nasuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Councilor Santinella.
Four.
Councilor Sikala.
Four.
Councilor Crisati.
Four.
And Councilor Hendrickson.
Four.
Nine in favor, none against.
Welcome back, I should say, to them. Okay, moving on to unfinished business. I just lost the damn agenda.
Hold on.
There it is. Items for discussion. Jim?
There's going to be a public hearing on August 7 at 4:30 for the field, field use. Just wanted to bring that up.
A council meeting.
Huh?
A public forum.
Public Forum meeting, August 7 at 4:30.
Where?
Downstairs.
In the Skid Row?
Skid Row Room.
Similar to how we ran the farmer's farm.
So.
4:30.
And at some point, Donald will have a presentation for the entire council on, he's doing, getting into the numbers and the costs that everyone will see. I think a few, you may have seen it, but again, he's done a ton of work to try to give people an idea of what it really costs to maintain all our fields, and at some point, our facilities as well.
All right. Can we get that possibly on the Town Manager's website? Get that published or Facebook or something, just to try to alert as many people?
Jim can give us the info.
Sorry, just so everyone knows, actually, the Leagues have given Donald, they have an email sort of blast, for lack of a better word, I apologize, I'm not saying it correctly, where they've already sent out to them.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's great. Put it on the web. We want as many people there as possible.
Yeah, maybe we can use theirs and just post it.
Great. All said, Jim. Thank you. Anyone else? Moving on to any other business proper to come before said meeting. Councilman Santinella.
You've been waiting for this all night, I know. Okay, so we have to address the roofs for the Police Department and the library, right? So I can't find the sheet. I didn't bring the sheet from Leadership. So I know that there was some funds that needed to be transferred from the annex roof budget, correct, that was then going to get moved over to fill the gap for the bid for the Police Department and the library. I don't know that number.
Just, just the library.
Just for the library.
Because the Police Department was under, so we're taking that balance plus.
So it's just, so the funds are coming from the annex to the library. So I don't, I don't know how to.
Say the word of consensus.
Yeah.
To add it to the agenda first.
So we need to add this to the agenda first.
Motion is made to add it to the agenda. Okay, all in favor? It is now added.
Okay. I'm in a little new territory here, so just bear with me. Okay, so we want to be able to, what is the dollar amount that we want to move from the annex budget to the library budget?
It was 180-something thousand.
Yeah, and you know, it's contained in the resolution. I hate for us to act.
The memo, you mean?
Yeah. The memo, what I'm thinking, councilors, is that we should say, we're giving a consensus for Mr. Nunes to award the contracts for the Police Department and the library. He can award them, but when we come back in September, we can do the technical transfers from the right accounts.
Not to exceed $200,000.
Right, put that, not to exceed it, and then we'll monitor it, and we'll come back when we have the final for the next meeting.
Okay, so the motion is to authorize the Department of Public Works Director to award the roof projects for the.
No, go out to bid.
Oh, he's already been out.
Oh, they did. Right, to award.
Sorry, John.
John, he's trying to trip you up. Go ahead. You're on a roll.
Award the roof projects for the Police Department and the library, and transfer no more than $200,000 from the annex budget to the library roof project.
Second.
The mind, it's still, still good.
Repeat that, please?
No.
And that was, somebody write that down.
Remind.
Sheila did. And we're going to put, submitted by John Santinella, Assistant Town Attorney.
Go. That's good.
You're hired.
And the memo was dated July 3.
July 3.
Okay, consistent with the July 3, 2024 memo submitted by Department of Public Works.
And then when we do, we'll bring it back for the act.
So he, we need to second it, right? Sheila, he made a motion.
He made the motion.
Second.
The amendment, so it's a second, yeah.
All right. Are there any questions on the motion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.